Good evening and welcome to the February 15th, 2022 School Committee Meeting for the Town of Tingsboro. I'd like to remind you that these meetings are audio and video recorded. My name is Rebecca Stanton and I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Grace Shambly, Student Representative.
Rob Mullin.
Justine Puma.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Julian Questucci.
Jeff Boe.
Ryan McMahon.
Anthony Sernola.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
I rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll seek a motion to approve the February 1st School Committee Meeting Minutes and the February 1st Executive Session Minutes. Executive Session Minutes not to be released at this time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries 7-0-0.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
We do have a crowd out here with us this evening and I think we all know why. I'd like to make a motion, or I will make a motion, to take Items 4 and 9B out of order.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That carries the 1. We will move to Item Number 4. Dr. Branko, Correspondence.
So we have just the DESI mask mandate memo is in your drive, on which clearly will be a topic of conversation tonight. So if you can take a look at that, that's in there, just letting us know that they have changed their mask recommendations and we will go right onto that discussion now if you'd like to.
Sure, yep, 9B.
Looking at 9B, just want to make sure that we're looking at, we had gone through, done another review on Section C, D, and E. Would you like to take a motion for our...
Sorry, we're looking at 9B, right?
Oh, sorry, I was on 8, my bad.
Okay. Dr. Branko?
Yep. So from this slide, the way you tonight, Superintendent has put together the recent timeline of events related to masking in schools. So as most of us are aware by now, then on Wednesday, February 9th, DESI committed to not extending the mask mandate beyond February 28th. Then this past Friday, February 11th, Dr. Flanagan sent out a correspondence to the community, letting them know that he would be recommending that the school committee take a motion to follow the DESI guidance and make masks optional. And that brings us to tonight, where we have our discussion points. Just a matter of note here, that in the policy that you did approve when some of this started, that this language is in there, the policy will remain in place until rescinded or amended by the Tingsboro School Committee. So as such, that will be one of the conversations that you will have to have tonight. Couple discussion points for the committee that have to be a point of interest. One, that the federal requirement will still be there for masks to be required on school buses. Discussion around health office protocols, so we'll talk about that in a few minutes. We'll also want to talk about the protocols around positive students and staff when they return after the five days. And then we'd like to point out that in Dr. Flanagan's letter to the community, that we talked about the mitigating strategies that we will continue to move forward with, maintaining three foot of distance indoors when feasible, continuing to distribute the test kits for students and staff who have opted into the at-home program, continue with testing opportunities for symptomatic individuals through the nurse's office when appropriate, and to continue the messaging on behalf of the town around available vaccination and booster clinics. So this is really the bulk of the discussion, Madam Chair, that the way the superintendent has seen it, that we have some options for you to discuss rescinding, amending, or adopting the MAS-C updated policy. And some of the conversation points will be around the possibility of requiring masks at specific school levels, which has been entertained in some places. Do you put out an advisory to wear masks or discuss one-way masking and does that become just a simple communication or policy? Do you rescind your policy outright? Or the next bulk of this slide really talks about the new updated MAS-C face covering policy. So that came out just in the middle of last week. We've taken a good look at that. And these five bullets are the major features of that new policy that rescinds the mask mandate, but talks about how the committee would be recommending that they are still worn by individuals who remain unvaccinated or otherwise immunocompromised when they're on school grounds. Individuals who are vaccinated won't be required to wear masks, they still can if they want to. And students and staff, this is an important part, when they finish after quarantining from having, being positive for COVID, they come back for Day 6 and 10. We don't want any gray area around that, so the recommendation and requirement still will be for six to 10 days. Those students and staff will come back and wear the mask in Days 6 through 10. And then we have to recognize that the health offices are state health offices, so that falls under the state requirement. So anybody, students and staff that go into the nurse's office will be popping on a mask at that point, regardless of what decision is made tonight, and that the federal order is the bus mask mandate. So that's not a local or a state decision, but that's a federal order. So regardless of your decision tonight, there'll still be a mask mandate on buses from the federal level. So I will respectfully turn it over to you to lead that discussion.
Could you explain one-way masking? We hear this terminology and I think it's important to just put a definition around it.
So there is substantial data coming out now around the benefits of one-way masking. So if I still believe I would like to mask, that there is still a benefit added health-wise for me to wear that mask. And a lot of us came out originally when a lot of the language is around my mask for you, your mask for me. And this has been an iterative learning process for us from the medical field and we're trying to absorb all of that information to the best of our ability. So there is some evidence around there that does make it medically proven that, you know, there's a positive nature to you wearing a mask, even though I might not be wearing my mask. And so that does give into the choice and allows us to really take this new advisory to heart to get rid of the mask mandate.
So it's just another way of saying it's family's choice?
Yeah, family's choice, student's choice, staff's choice. Yep.
Sure, okay. Maybe we'll just go around the room. Did you have any questions or discussion points, Rob? Sorry, I'm putting you on the spot.
No, I, you know, this is the first chance we've gotten to look at this. This has not been sent to us, as most documents are, for review.
It's, I'm sorry, it is in the drive, yeah.
I'm sorry, what's that?
It was placed in the drive this afternoon. It was put in late.
Yeah. I still have some concerns over this, the different options. I have concerns for students who are compromised.
Can you put your microphone?
I am concerned for particularly the elementary school, when not all the students are, have or have the opportunity to be vaccinated at this point. And I know there are parts of this that says require masks in specific schools, as far as for our options for tonight. But you also take a look at the vaccination percentages at the middle school, which still remain very low. I'm encouraged by the high school numbers, but then that's one, both the middle school and the high school are considered one campus with a lot of crossover between the two buildings. So I think the percentage numbers for this needs to be a campus number, not just a building number. But, yeah, I'm looking forward to hearing whatever, what all my colleagues have to say tonight about this. And I hope we can make a decision tonight.
Thanks, Rob. Justine, did you...
Well, I have the benefit of being in a school. So what I've noticed in the last two or so weeks is my classes have filled. You know, we're not having as many people testing positive, being gone, having MTCs. I've noticed that kids are coming back, kids aren't getting as infected so much, whether it's because most of them have been infected and so they're not getting it again, or because of the higher vaccination rates. So I've seen a positive trend in reduction of kids being absent in less numbers. So that's just my observation as a teacher in a building with kids.
Excuse me, can you guys hear back there?
Yeah, anything, nothing, there's no broadcast.
Oh, it's not being broadcast?
Oh, okay.
This is not the microphones, they're not for the room, the microphones are for television only.
But we can't hear them anyway, because there's no broadcast, it's just, you can't hear me standing here. I can't hear your words.
Okay, I'll be louder. I can...
Just, 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 Justine, it's everything.
No, I can definitely talk in a louder voice. Is that better? I can project.
Take your mask off when you hear you.
No, I'm not going to take my mask off. Nice try.
Go ahead, Justine. Why don't you finish?
So what I've noticed is, being a high school teacher, I've noticed less kids being absent in the last couple of weeks, which I find is a positive trend. I've found that I've had less kids being absent for COVID, which is a positive, in my opinion. It seems like most of the kids who are going to be, have gotten it, have gotten it. So I'm just seeing less numbers in my own experience, in my own classroom and in my own environment.
Thanks, Chair. Tony, did you want to speak?
I'm in total favor of rescinding this mask policy. And not because they're here, but because I think it's the right thing to do for our students and our staff. The MAS-C face mask coverings, nose and mouth strongly recommended for those who are unvaccinated. We don't ever, and I hope we never, point out the differences in our children, period. I personally would not recommend having one group of children wear a mask and one group not. So I'm glad that is worded that way. And I would adopt the MAS-C policy in replace of the DESI policy. That's my personal, that's how I will vote this evening.
Thanks, Tony. Ryan?
Yeah, I have a few points. At this point, everybody age five and up has had an opportunity to get the vaccine. We've had vaccine clinics right here in town. So I think that's, you know, anybody who wants it should have had it by now or could have had it by now. KN-95 masks are readily available. You know, two years ago when this started, we were told, don't get the N95s, you know, just get the surgical mask, because of, we wanted to save them for the healthcare workers. KN-95s are available, so they protect the wear. I would also like to ask, you know, you or Mark to work through Dr. Flanagan to get the specific language from the federal government that DESI is saying mandates the masks on the bus, as well as the windows to be opened.
Yeah.
I think there's been, there's been some conversation online this week that there really is no federal mandate. I just want to make sure that we do have that specific language and we do our due diligence with respect to that. This has been one of the coldest winters we've had in a while, so having those windows open, I think, is tough for the kids. And the last thing I would say is, I know we took this out of order, I would like to delay the vote on this until we've had citizen time. I think it's important to hear the voices of our citizens, so I would like to wait.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Jeff?
So I'd like to say, I think we're, you know, when everything started, you know, we were in a very, very different place than we are today. You know, at the time, it made sense to have mandates in place, it made sense to learn more about what was happening. I think, you know, it's really already been said, but we have mitigation efforts in place. You can wear a mask if you need to wear one or choose to wear one, you can be vaccinated if you choose to get vaccinated. So we're in a very, very different place than we have been in the past. My only concern, depending on how this vote were to go, is just to ensure that students in either direction are not giving each other a hard time, and making sure that the students are not bullying each other one way or the other, regardless of how they believe, their family believes. It should be choice at this point. So not to drag on a little bit further, I think, you know, I agree with Ryan to delay the vote until after we've had citizen time, just make sure we have heard from everybody. But I would be in favor of rescinding the policy.
Thanks, Jeff.
I don't really have a loud voice, but I'll do my best. First of all, I do agree with holding the vote back if possible, so citizens can have an opportunity to speak, because I think that's important. At the beginning of the school year, I did not want to start the school year with masks. However, I ended up voting for us to wear masks, because I felt that we were making a lot of steps forward. We were getting rid of some of the mitigation, we were having all the kids come together. It was good for the first two, one or two months. And then it's dragged on now for five months. I think it's been too long, I think we need to get rid of the masks, and I think we need to really concentrate on the social, emotional development of our children.
Did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Great. So I agree with rescinding the mask policy as well. I appreciate the MAS-C wording, which basically makes it optional, except for nurses' offices, buses, and Ryan, we will work with Dr. Flanagan to get the verbiage and the support behind that verbiage on the buses.
Thank you, I just want to make sure we do our due diligence.
Yep, yep, absolutely. At this point, you know, we have, we have weeks where we have zero cases in the schools. There's no need for masks being mandated. If a family chooses that masks are right for them, then they can make that choice. Masks are readily available, vaccinations are readily available, and I think it's time for it to go. Thanks.
Madam Chair, I'll make the vote to move, or motion, excuse me, a vote, a motion to move Item 3 up on the agenda, or back to where we were on the agenda?
I'll second that motion?
Yeah. For citizen's time.
Is there any discussion?
What are we doing?
Basically going back to citizen time.
Oh, okay, thanks.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 7-0-0. So we're now in citizen time. Just to address citizen time, so tonight we'll allow three minutes per speaker, but I do want to note that this is, it's a departure from our existing policies. As part of our, I'm sure you've all been watching these very exciting school committee meetings. As part of our policy update, the MAS-C guidelines are for two minutes, but I know you guys don't read them. It's just, there's a lot of reading. So we will do three minutes tonight, but just as a note for future reference, it is two minutes. And so, you know, we'll invite our first guest up. When you come up, if you could please state your name and your address, and then have the floor.
How is everybody? Very good, sir. For the record, Pete Nikosia, One Jonathan Circle. I have four kids here in the high school. I'm just coming in tonight to respectfully ask that you follow, you know, the change in the DESI guidelines and unmask the kids moving forward. I saw the TTA poll, you've got over 70% of the teachers in favor of removing the masks as well. I suspect that percentage is a lot higher amongst the students, if you were to ask You know, the reality is, we're two-plus years into the pandemic now, there's a lot more information out there that, if you look at it, it clearly justifies, you know, changing and removing the mandate. I mean, for those who think their risk mitigation needs to be higher, they have that option to mask and face shield and do whatever else they think they need to do. So I don't want the vote to be construed as a mask prohibition, it's just mass choice. So I just, it's just time. So I'd ask that you stay consistent with following the DESI guidelines and vote to remove it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here today to request that the board remove the mask mandate in Tingsboro Public Schools, consistent with the recommendation of Dr. Flanagan, Commissioner O'Reilly, and Governor Baker. During the governor's press conference last week, Commissioner O'Reilly made a few of the following statements. I just want to reread them for you. During the past two years, the impact of COVID-19 on children has caused a strain on their mental health, emotional wellbeing, sorry, emotional wellbeing and academic success. We are relieved to now be in a place where we can provide young people with additional relief from COVID-19 restrictions, so they can continue to return to normalcy in the classroom. Removing the mask mandate will make it easier for students to learn, particularly our young readers and students learning English as a second language. While masking is no longer a state requirement, we ask that all school leaders and students make sure they respect all the individual choices around mask-wearing. The last quote in particular is something I wanted to highlight. I feel strongly that going forward, the Massachusetts public school system needs to adhere to their own advice and respect the personal choices of the individual regarding the decision to mask or not, and to vaccinate or not. The state and many members of the community have been disrespectful of my family's personal choice over the last two years. Respecting one another's personal choices about their own health should not be at the broad discretion of the government. However, we should not dwell in the past. We can only move forward, and if we are truly respecting the choices of individuals, we should not see any more mandates like this in the future. I hope the fellow citizens of our community will create a culture of acceptance within their own families as we shift into the next phase of all of this. Thank you in advance for voting to remove the mask mandate in Tingsboro Public Schools.
Avery Nato for Constantine Drive, Speaker.
Please keep the lifted mask mandate, please. First, no mask, then till October, then November, then December, then January, the more, and now the lifted mask mandate after February. When is this going to be real? When me and my sister were told they are lifting it, I didn't believe it. I wasn't crossing my fingers. I wasn't going to get my hopes crushed again. I was trying to be smart, but then my mom said I was from DESI, which is what started this nonsense in the first place. So no more. We are doing this for $7.4 million, which I was told the last time I was here. So if I were here more, $7.4 million, if again you could tell me your name and I would not believe it. So please, keep the lifted masking mandate, please, thanks.
Erica Nato for Constantine Drive. I just have to reiterate the respect of everybody's choices. My kids have been significantly disrespected, have been told that they're going to kill people because they don't necessarily have their masks on correctly. It's just not okay. And I've been told by administration that you can't control what kids say, and I get it, but we need to be respectful of everybody on both sides. Thank you.
Good evening, Al Stamp, 30 Willardale Avenue. I have four children that have all gone through Tingsboro Schools, one of which is now at the VoK. One of the toughest decisions my wife and I made at the beginning of this was, when everything was uncertain and we weren't quite sure how things were going to work out for the kids and everything, we decided to pull the three youngest from Tingsboro Public Schools, which is a real tough choice for us to make at the time. But due to what we were seeing going on with other families, the issues that are happening with the kids, we decided that it would be best for our kids. In that moment, we also realized we were teaching our kids that sometimes you just got to be brave and just to stay out of it and let things take its course. And we were able to, fortunately, raise our kids and homeschool them. What was more difficult to watch was their friends around them, their parents couldn't do that. They were forced to either lose jobs or do other things through all this. So the stressors that we see with these children now are probably the bigger concerns, that everybody's been so scared about what we know of a virus now to not really be attacking healthy people to the nth. And what we see more, both in my wife and I's professional careers in the medical fields, seeing the social impacts in families and the long-lasting effects that we're causing our children with that. So, you know, I respectfully ask that this board rescind this. I honestly think that this committee has done a great job through this. Everybody who's taken a position on this committee has done so, in the best interest of the children, I do believe. I would hope that we've learned a lot in going through this, that we don't go this drastic and we use a little more logic, because I really feel like this was a bit of overkill in the end, and to put our kids through this was tough. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Colleen McKinnon and I live on Merrimack Way. I think we, especially teachers in the schools, see children with, they're putting on, you know, a strong front, they're trying to be cool in front of their friends, make sure they're obeying the rules, not getting yelled at for having their masks down or under their nose or anything like that. But as parents, we see our kids off the bus, defeated. My son recently, he gets carsick, I'm sorry, he gets carsick. And he got sick on the bus and he held his mask with the vomit, I'm sorry, with the vomit in his mask for 30 minutes, because he thought the bus driver was going to think he had COVID. And he was going to have to walk home, he's six years old. The look on his face when he got home broke my heart. I told him that of course the bus driver would never do that, but he thought that was what was going to happen, that he was going to have to walk home by himself at six years old. And it broke my heart. I have a, he's in first grade, I have a fourth grader, who comes home every day saying, I felt like I was going to pass out in the gym class today, because I'm wearing my mask and it's preventing me from breathing. I see rashes on their faces, and I see my son, if he takes his mask off to have a snack, there's a boy, but because he doesn't, my son doesn't wear an N95 mask, he tells him every day that he's going to get COVID and he's going to kill people and he's a murderer. And I always tell my son just to be polite and say everybody's different and to just never say anything back and respect people's decisions, but I really recommend that, you know, parents on both sides talk to their kids, because no matter what the outcome of this vote is, because my son, you know, at the beginning of the year, he was telling me how nice this boy was and how he's one of my best friends and he was so excited that he was sitting next to him in class. And now he's being told he's a murderer. So it's been tough since he and my kids go through this, and it really needs to, I really hope that you guys vote and end this, because their mental health is just going down the drain, and I just don't want to see kids in this town turning to drugs or suicide, especially the older kids. It's just, it's been quite, quite a bit even on us, but for these kids, it's something that they're going to carry with them forever. We need to stand up for them and show them that the world is a safe place and to get along and agree to disagree. And just, I just ask that you please agree with the DESI guidelines and remove these masks, please.
Did anybody else want to speak?
Is there anybody out there who wants to speak?
Yep. Anybody? I don't know. I don't know. Okay. You got this. You got this. Good. Come in, yeah.
I'm Emma Lacrosse of the 18 Highland Street, and I think you should vote for no masks.
That's it?
That's it.
Do you guys think we're nervous? Sorry. Good job, Emma.
All right, last call. Did anybody else want to speak?
Chrissy? Javi?
I think we have some students that might want to speak, so we'll give them just a moment.
It's a little dark, rocky.
It is.
Kids are...
Sarah, are they all said?
Yeah, I think they're all said.
Okay, okay. All right, so we're going to end citizen time, if nobody else wants to speak. All right, we'll move on. We already did correspondence, so we can move on to Item Number 5, which is personnel.
Thank you. May I make a motion?
Have at it, Tony.
I will gladly.
I will gladly. First, before I make that motion, I would like to thank the kids who spoke this evening. It is not easy to get up in the act. Given the adults that got up and speak, it's not easy to do that, so thank you. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to rescind the DESI guideline and adopt the MASC updated guideline.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Rob?
I agree with Tony. Thank you very much for all the parents that came out and spoke today. The children, you did a great job tonight. To the mother of the son or the child who was being told those despicable things, I'm very sorry. That the division that we have politically and even morally right now is awful. We as a community should be coming together to support each other despite what anyone's ideas of what should be right or wrong. And I hope that-- I know, obviously, I know the way the vote's gonna go tonight. And while I hope that we all come together and support each other, whichever decision the family and the children make, that if a child decides or a family decides that their child still needs to wear a mask, that they're supported by their friends, by the staff at the school, by the community as a whole. There are children in this, in our school district who do need to continue wearing them, and I want to see them supported at all times. I myself do believe that it's too early to remove the mask mandate. I'm afraid that the numbers, the low numbers that we're seeing within our school districts are, within our district, is a result of everyone wearing masks. And to have this rescinded the day after we come back from vacation, I believe that we're opening up our cells for higher numbers and more kids and staff getting sick. I will, however, say that I've heard my fellow committee members, I support them, I respect their ideas, and because of that, because of the, because of the support in the community to rescind this mask mandate, I will vote to support that as well tonight as well. So that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you, Rob. I would like to just, if you don't mind me adjusting the wording on your motion just a tiny bit, to rescind the existing policy 5.32. Okay, thank you.
Which is the DESI.
Is it? Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Dr. Branko, clarify that. What our policy 5.32 is to follow--
But we have some Tingsboro language in there, so yeah, yep. Yes.
Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 700.
And that will be effective, Madam Chair, Monday morning, February 28th.
Yep, no, so optional masks the day that we return from February vacation, for February vacation.
Thank you for clarifying. Are you all gonna stay for the rest of the meeting?
It's really exciting.
I've got so much more important stuff to say.
Yeah, I know. We just want you to support the middle school vote, too.
We'll give it just a moment, just to allow those that need to move to move.
Do I need to make a motion to go back to our regular--
No.
Or we're good?
No, I think we're good.
We just moved it out of order.
All right, so we already covered correspondence, which is item number four, and now on to personnel. We have a request for maternity leave for Denise Hamilton, a THS teacher, and congratulations, Mrs. Hamilton. Moving on to item number six, Grace, share the success.
Share loudly, though. All right. The TES Student Council would like to thank everyone that donated to their estimation jars last week. Can you hear me? No?
Just one moment.
I'm not gonna close it if we can't, but I'm gonna close it a little bit.
Grace, give it another try.
We can carry on with it.
I don't know that we should carry on with the door closed, because I don't want it to appear that the meeting is closed.
You just meant without Ryan, yeah.
All right, third time's a charm, Grace, go ahead.
The TES Student Council would like to thank everyone that donated to their estimation jars last week, where they collected over $500 for the Ocean Cleanup North Pacific Foundation. The elementary school is also excited to announce that they have preschool registration opening on February 28th through March 4th. The registration packets can be dropped off in a vestibule lockbox, and the kindergarten registration will also be opening in person on Wednesday, March 2nd, and more details can be found on their website. TMS is looking forward to their winter carnival on Thursday, where students will participate in a variety of activities and enjoy a couple hours with their friends. And the high school had a great turnout for the annual college fair, where over 65 colleges, universities, and military organizations were present. The cast and crew put on a great performance of Nine to Five the Musical, and the robotics team is at hard at work preparing for the bop ball competitions later in March. In athletics, senior athletes were recognized at their senior nights over the last few weeks, and the wrestling team won the Division II North Sectional Championship. They will compete in the state tournament this Saturday, and all the three schools wish students and families a great break.
Thanks, Grace. I think item number seven, we're gonna take the subcommittee update in eight for unfinished business. And Dr. Branko, all you.
Let me get back to the start of the slide then for you. So, quick update on the middle school building project. There is actually a meeting tomorrow night where the middle school building committee will take a vote for the final school option. There are three options being presented: schematic budget base, a budget field option one, and a budget field option two. And so those will be presented by our consultants. There'll be some good conversations around that, and the hope is that we'll come out of there with a vote on those projects. Do you have anything to add relative to that?
I do not, but I do have one if I could.
Yep, yep.
I believe our friend would probably like to get out of here. What have you guys would like to do?
I think we're good.
Yes. I think they're happy, so that's a good thing. All right, thank you.
Bye, thank you.
I'm sorry, I just--
So that will happen tomorrow night on the 16th. On Tuesday, February 22nd, next week, we have a draft mailer that we are working on right now. It's gonna be similar to the digital mailer that was used. It will be a hard copy mailer that goes out to the entire community. That will be one of multiple mailers that go out over the course of the next couple months, and as information becomes more refined, we'll refine the mailer, and there'll be second and third mailers that go out. March 16th, there's gonna be a community forum, so we really hope that we get a good turnout for citizens to come and really get some questions answered and take a deep dive into the presentations of the option that the committee votes for.
If I could on that one?
Yeah.
I'd like it if this board could all be--
When is it?
On March 16th at the community forum. I just think a lot of this board, Rebecca and I are on it, but a lot of this board has not been to any of the meetings, and I think it would be nice to show our support as a board at the community forum, yeah. We do have a school building committee meeting just before that. We will recess from that to go to the forum.
What time is that?
Six o'clock, I believe.
And where is that?
It's at the middle school in the auditorium.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
We'll discuss this again on our March 4th meeting, okay? So then, just a reminder that on May 3rd, we'll go to a town meeting vote, and then on May 17th, provided it passes at the town meeting by the two-thirds majority, there'll be the vote for the debt exclusion on the ballot. So that's the process. Things are going, I think, very positively. The designs are fantastic, and so we're excited about the process we're making so A quick highlight on the vaccination rates, so you can see that we have them broken down by grade level, and then we, total percentages over on the right side, so you can see who's fully vaccinated, and so you can see we're at 76% at the high school, 60% at the middle school, et cetera, for a total of about 58% across the district. No surprise that we're higher in the upper grade levels, they had more time and they actually had access, but we do see steady, steady rise in those percentages in the other populations, and to your point earlier, they're readily available at this point, so we're confident that those will continue to move in the right direction.
And Mr. Poe?
Sure, I'll try this again, not do it, you know, do it the first time I could do before. So, in your drive, we do have sections F, G, and H that I think we had till last Friday to get back to Dr. Flanagan. He did not have any, anyone reach out to him with any changes. So I would, Madam Chair, be looking to see if we could finalize as a second read those three sections.
So I'll seek a motion to approve the second read of sections F, G, and H of the Model MASC Policy Manual.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries 700. And then the first read, did you want to cover that?
Yeah. And then for section I, that's also gonna be in your drive, so the Model MASC Policy Manual, you know, we did go through in the policy meeting, we did do a first read, so I just want to give you a chance to go through and review and then provide Dr. Flanagan with any feedback, questions, concerns that you may have ahead of our next meeting, which is March 1st. So if we could have feedback, I would say by the, anything by the 25th, if that works.
25th, yep. All right, so I'll seek a motion to approve as a first read section I of the Model MASC Policy Manual.
I'll make that motion.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 700.
I will turn it over to Mr. Messina for the budget portion of this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Branko. So this is the timeline that the superintendent's been presenting at previous meetings. We did open our regular ed transportation bus bid last Thursday. One bidder, DBUS, was the sole bidder of the project. Happy to report that their bid was for $418 per bus per day. That is actually less than the projected budget figure of $430. Year two would be at $435 per bus per day, and year three at $450 per day. So at your next meeting, we'll be bringing a recommendation to the school committee in terms of approving the bus contract for the next three years. That'll be on your agenda on March 1st. Brings us to tonight, and then jumping ahead to the date and read, the March 15th, we'll make the final budget recommendation. Tonight's will just be an initial budget presentation at this time. We still are, you know, trying to refine some of the revenue projections to get the actual school committee budget down to an exact figure. So, Dr. Branko, if you wanted to maybe blow that up a little bit, thank you. So, nothing new at the top, with the exception of the transportation number being reduced by some $40,000 to reflect the actual bus bid, so if you go just a little lower on that mark. So the budget that you have seen with the revised transportation number of $22.2 million is now enhanced by what we have gotten from the various schools and the administrative meetings in terms of the needs for next year in regards to staffing. Dr. Branko, I'm sure I can speak very well about what our L population has been doing the past number of years, so we are recommending putting in a 1.0 district-wide L teacher into that department. Based upon the current needs of the elementary school special education department, they are requesting an additional para, and the middle school sees a need to bring their current .6 reading teacher up to a full-time level. So adding those 2.4 positions to your current budget would bring the preliminary request at just over $22.3 million or roughly 3.2% of your current budget for this year. Also, Dr. Flanagan noted that there are eight positions in long-term needs that are not in FY '23 that will need to be addressed at some point in the future. Those eight positions are not prioritized in any particular order, but we do have a elementary school literacy coach, an additional district-wide L teacher, two special education teachers at the elementary school, high school social studies teacher, a district-wide psychologist, and one each, a K-8 reading interventionist and a math interventionist. So those eight positions with an estimated budget number at this time of roughly $535,000 are numbers that are not on the request at this time, but most likely will be coming up in future years.
Dr. Branko, that's two L teachers in a relatively short time. Could you speak to a little bit more about what the need is for that?
So we have two, 2.0 currently in the district, and over my six years here, that's gone from five to 15 students up to 100 right now, and that's a very large growth in a short period of time. That does not count the 50-some-odd students that are FELs, that means they were, they had been previously been L students, and we're on, we have to monitor those students for the course of their time at Tingsboro Public Schools in case there's any slippage or regression. So we do have Kate Wells, who gets a stipend to be our coordinator, who does yeoman's work to organize it, schedule it, but because of the growing population, the changing demographics, once you hit 100 students, and it's not by percentage, it's very strange to me, but it's by number of students, so once you hit 100 students, you move from what's low incident to mid-incident. And there are also other DESI requirements with that. Could be the formation of an LPAC, could be formation of larger staff and deeper services, and we still feel that even though we have all of our teachers licensed and trained up in meeting the needs of all of these students, that we really have to use Ms. Wells in a different way to make sure she's supporting teachers and students in the classroom, and that's become increasingly difficult with the amount of students that we have. So this first ask is for one more additional position in this coming school year, but if the trend continues, we see no reason to think that those numbers are gonna either freeze at 100 or go in the other direction.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other discussion points on the budget or questions?
If I may, Madam Chair. I've been tasked with a 2.8, I believe, by the town. About where we--
I don't think we've been given a very hard number. I know at the tri-board, Mr. Hanson presented either 2.7 or 2.8% growth over the 5-year We're continuing to refine this budget. It's not your final budget that we're recommending. We are going to look a little harder at some revenue numbers and if, you know, with the intention of trying to get that 3.2% number decreased.
But I don't think we're that far off that 3.2.
Not at all.
That was really the point of my question was, we're not--
That was really the point of my question was, we're not far from what had been recommended.
Right. And then just a reminder, we do have the finance committee coming to our next meeting on March 1st to discuss budget. Moving on to 9A, the, I think, still.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So some of the discussion that's taken place in our budget subcommittee meetings has, has been surrounding our substitute teacher rates. We have not increased these in a non-COVID school year since FY '17. What we see on a regular basis is an inability to get substitutes for our buildings. And, you know, some of the reasons could be the increasing minimum wage in the, in the private sector, as well as some other districts in our area raising their substitute rates. So the budget subcommittee did unanimously recommend this at their January 25th meeting to raise all of the substitute categories listed to the recommended amount. I would point out the nurse sub-rate is at $200 a day currently. We did raise that from $165 pre-COVID to $200 during the 2021 school year. And we did make the decision to keep it at the $200 a day this year while we continue to have COVID numbers to deal with in the, in the schools. So while it is $200 a day, the recommendation would be to keep it at that $200 a day figure, similar to what a DESI-licensed long-term sub receives. So that is the recommendation of the budget subcommittee to the full school committee.
Sure.
Can you tell me what the lowest paid teacher is full-time per day? Not right off the top of my head. No. Is it more than $165 a day?
Yes.
So I'll seek a motion to accept the substitute pay rates as recommended by the budget subcommittee. Is there any discussion?
When would this become effective?
With the, with the next school year.
Any other discussion points?
I just think this would be a good thing, because right now, if there's not enough substitutes, our kids get funneled into at the high school, into the gym, they get funneled into the library, and very little learning is actually happening, as opposed to having a substitute in a classroom where they could do what the teacher wanted them to do. So right now, it's very distracting to be funneled into a cafeteria, an auditorium, or a gym to try and get their schoolwork done.
Rob?
Mr. Messina, where are we this year as a percentage of our substitute budget?
Off, roughly. You know me, I don't like to deal with roughlies. Okay, sorry. Without having the number in front of me. I can get that for the full committee. Okay, let me. As I've explained in the budget subcommittee meetings, that, that is not just a product of regular absences. It's also a product of any long-term. Sure. Maternity leaves, long-term illness leaves, anything like that. Historically, the substitute line items will run over budget, and they're usually counterbalanced by a teacher that might take unpaid leave as a result of going beyond their, their medical leaves or maternity leaves. So historically, those numbers are going to run over. I did not make a recommendation of the budget subcommittee to change FY '23's budget lines until we have a chance to see what the new rates will do. But, you know, in terms of where we are budget line, we're most likely over with the understanding that we do have some long-term regular teachers out on unpaid leave at this time.
I guess then my, I should reword the question then and ask this, since unfortunately I could not make that meeting. Is it possible to put, to implement this, this year? And would it be recommended to implement it this year?
I could certainly take the committee's recommendation to increase it effective on the 28th of February. It could tweak the FY '23 budget revenue lines a bit. But the will of the committee.
Can I just ask another question? When teachers are out due to COVID, is some of that covered by COVID funds? Or CARES funds, I guess it would be?
So, so the answer is, depending upon when they were out. The answer is yes.
Okay.
So historically, going back into the, into the depths of the COVID years, as of December 31st, there was one law that was covering, December 31st of 2020, there was one law that was, was covering sick time absences with COVID funds. And then there was a period from January to about March or May where there was no coverage. So if somebody was out sick with COVID, there was nothing protecting their sick time. They would take, they would use their sick time. Effective in May, the state passed a law that is effective until April of this year or until the funds run out, whichever is less. So if the funds run out before April, they won't be covered. But that will get the town an $850 per person or five days maximum, whichever, you know, whichever comes first. Where essentially the town is reimbursed up to $850 per person. We can give them a per diem amount back to them based, based upon their daily rate. So, you know, a teacher might be somewhere a little less than two days to any of the lower people. It could be up to five days missed. But it is a submission that the town is making to the state to get reimbursed. It was a long question.
Yeah.
A long answer to a short question.
But it's a really confusing line item then, because of all this.
It, it has always, and I bring this up at the budget subcommittee meetings, that it is a line item that has a lot of variables. You know, but ultimately, you know, as Ms. Puma put out, you know, we need to have the substitutes in front of the kids. So, you know, whether or not the, the person out is being paid. You know, it may hit your budget with two, two people, essentially, the person out and the person subbing. And then it starts to swing in the other direction if the, you know, a portion of the long-term leave is unpaid. So now you have only, only one person, a substitute, covering a teacher who, who isn't getting paid for that time. So, so that balances in your favor. So it, it's that, that sort of long dance of your budget where one line goes up, the other line, you know, the other expense line goes down. And, you know, at the end of the year, we want to see a zero, that your budget's in balance and has been expended as, as planned with a bunch of unplanned items in between.
Well, good luck. But I do have another question, I guess, to what Dustine, Mrs. Puma, had said about the funneling the kids into the, now, has that happened here?
All year.
Oh, it has been?
Yes.
I wasn't sure if that was happening at the school where you worked.
Right now, it's happening. Normally, we have a different system where.
No, no, I'm just, yeah, talking about here.
So, yeah, so I, you know, I think it's, particularly at the high school, it's a little bit of a triage. At the elementary school, you're going to see, we clearly can't do that. So we're using paraprofessional substitute coverage, sometimes doubling students up. You'll see a principal and assistant principal, specialist facilitators, it's all hands on deck with the younger kids. And you get to the middle school, and it is a little different sometimes in the middle school. We have team teaching up there. So, you know, you'll see Mr. O'Brien taking two groups of kids and doing a large group project that way, you know, in a bigger area, maybe in the library or something. As they come up to the high school, a lot more independent learning, a lot of Chromebook assignments, a lot of Google Classroom assignments. So if the teacher knows they're going to be out, they might be in this area, in the cafeteria or in the library. They're technically on task doing student work and school-related work. It's absolutely not the same as having a teacher, right? We, we recognize all of that through COVID, if, if nothing else. But right now, it's a little bit of triage. So again, sometimes it's two teachers sharing, one teacher sharing two classrooms, students being covered in one area or another area. But we have to make tough decisions where we deploy substitute teachers and how we cover them based on the age of the students, too.
Yes, I only meant the high school. Because right now, that's where I have a student, so I can.
Right, that's what you know.
That's what I know.
Okay. I think we should go ahead and recommend it, if we can do it this year. I think we should try to get more subs. It's hard running the school that way. That's my feeling.
From a budgetary standpoint, I'd like to ask Mr. Messina just to take a look.
Yeah, we can do that.
At this year's budget and make sure that we have the room in this year's budget to be able to do so. Because we do have to be balanced at the end of the year. And then revisit it on March 1st.
That's perfect. I can do that for you.
So I'll seek a motion. Let me get my wording, I apologize. I'll seek a motion to accept, accept the substitute pay rates as recommended by the budget subcommittee for fiscal year '22-'23, and to revisit at the March 1st meeting for the remainder of the current fiscal year.
I make that motion?
Is there any discussion?
Oh, I just want to say that I, I think it's really important to have the right, the correct staffing. That's, it's, that's really important. You know, we're, we have kids that, you know, have had a tough year. And now, if we can do anything within our power to make the staffing correct, it's important. I know what a strain it is to the kids, the teachers, it's very difficult. So I would recommend at all possible, if we can, go forward this year and put the pay up. Not guarantee that we're going to get all these subs, but it might help.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 700.
Thank you.
We already covered 9B, which was the DESI mask mandate. And Mr. Messina, you're up again.
Oh, good.
For finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your drive this evening is a list of the warrants that were presented to the committee tonight. The warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in there. There are also three warrants reported to you earlier that we have adjusted. This was a combination of a transposition error on the original cover, a cover sheet to the actual bill warrant. There was a sort of glitch in the new system, which did not allow a credit to be properly posted. So the town accountant did take that off, which increased that budget number. And then there was a small two-cent error on, again, the cover page on an additional warrant. So wanted to bring that on to the list of bill warrants for the committee's review tonight. For signing a payroll, there is none tonight. We'll catch up at the next meeting. And lastly, your school committee finance packet is in the drive. There are actually what your normal, normal one-report school committee budget, you would see. There is actually two reports in the drive. One is salary-based and one is expense-based. And we're doing this because we've made the switch over for bill paying onto the new MUNIS system at town hall. So you now have expenses living both in the old soft-right accounting system and in the new MUNIS accounting system. So what I did for you on that is used my internal report that I, I prepare as off of those reports, basically combining the two accounting systems into one report for your review. But they are a salary report and an expense report. Both of those are in your finance packet this month, as well as the normal revolving account balance and the student account balance. And I'll leave the, the headcount numbers to the chair as of February 1st.
As of February 1st, our Tinsborough Elementary School had 812 students. Tinsborough Middle School had 392 students. Tinsborough High School had 426 students. We had 25 out-of-district students, for a total of 1,655 students. Also, I shortchanged Dr. Branko on this last slide for the upcoming school calendar.
It's okay, just, just as you're calibrating your own calendars, just a reminder that we have February break coming up. And then a regularly scheduled school committee meeting on March 1st, where you'll be discussing the assistant superintendent finalist with the superintendent. And then March 15th and March 16th with, there's your school building committee meeting and community forum as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, the forum will be at 7:00.
Yes.
It's at 6:30.
Yep.
Thank you.
School committee discussion, Grace?
I'm all set. Have a good break. Thank you.
Rob?
I, same thing. I hope everyone has a wonderful break next week. I hope everyone is careful, comes back to us healthy, and all rested. Thanks.
I just want to give a shout out to the theater group who did an amazing nine-to-five production. There was a particular very good cowboy who did a great routine, I must say. I'm a little biased. But the show was phenomenal. The seniors did it a great job. Ms. Martin cast a great show. It was awesome. And I hope everyone has a great, safe vacation.
Mr. Messina?
I'm all set tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Tenorella?
I look forward to our March 1st meeting, where I don't have to wear this mask anymore. Very nice. Thank you to the students and parents who came out this evening and spoke very passionate about this. It's nice to see. We don't have many visitors here at our school committee meeting. So when they're passionate about it, come out and talk to us about it. I look forward to seeing our kids' faces again. It'll be nice. And have a great vacation. I think our staff and students deserve it and could use it.
Rickman?
I'm not sure the rest of us are excited to see you without a mask. I also want to thank everybody who came and spoke tonight, especially the students. It's tough for adults to get up and speak in front of a group, so for young children like that to speak, you know, is really impressive. So I'm happy we voted the way we did. I think it's, you know, this time a year ago, we were voting to return in person. A year later, we're returning, we're returning without masks. It's taken forever, but there is progress. There is light at the end of the tunnel, and I think we're moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Bo?
Just reiterating the same thing, just, you know, happy with the mask vote had gone in the, in the direction that it did tonight. I just ask that parents and, and students just talk to each other and just understand that, you know, there needs to be understanding, compassion for people that may choose differently than, than you may, may around the mask. And then just ask that teachers and administration just keep an extra ear open for any, any nonsense. And we did hear from a couple of folks today that, you know, there were some things that were happening that were, you know, pretty terrible, that none of the students should have to, to deal with that. You know, they're here to learn, they're not here to have to deal with, you know, commentary from, from peers. So I just ask that, you know, we're a small town, you know, I think we can, we can definitely do a better job of, of coming together and, and supporting each other than having to tolerate some of that.
I agree. And I, you know, I also say that, you know, I really challenge the administration to make it clear to everyone that it's not, we're taking off masks, we're making it mass choice. And people can choose whether or not to wear a mask, and it's purely their choice. And neither side, as you said, should be condemned by what their decisions are. And that has to be clearly told to all students and all administration and all teachers in the, in the school district and be known. But I am excited, and I think it'll help start healing. Because it's very hard to, to teach, it's very hard to be taught in an environment where you don't see people's face. So much of what we do as teachers is our expressions of, you know, and we haven't seen that. So let the healing begin, and let's go forward.
Dr. Branko?
I'm all set.
You're all set? All right. Well, I'm, you know, I'm proud of us as a school committee, and I thank each and every one of you, including the administration, for helping us get the information that we need, answering our questions. And I'm proud that we follow DESI guidelines and continue to follow DESI guidelines. The DESI guidelines are to make masks a personal choice, and I'm glad that we did that tonight. So thank you all for supporting that change. And with that, we have no need for executive session, so I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 700. We're adjourned.